I am, in speaking for all of us, we are glad so many of you are here. And we will start our evening with a prayer offered by Mr. Bolden.
Good evening. Let us bow a moment for prayer. To a wise and loving Father, I want to thank you for your many and abundant blessing. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of reasonable good health. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking you that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, a sense of welfare and true needs for our people, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what pleases you and what benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Nacogdoches. It is in your blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Bolden. I'd like to now call the City Council Meeting of February 19th, 2019, to order. Has anyone signed up for public comment? Okay. Then we will move along to Agenda Item Numbers Three and Four. If anyone would like to remove something from the consent agenda, we can do that. If not, the Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion when you approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sign. Motion passes. Onto our regular agenda, Agenda Item Number Five, Consider Banning Electronic Cigarette Smoking in Non Smoking Areas Throughout the City of Nacogdoches, Texas. And we have Kim Barton doing that presentation this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. As Mayor Brophy said, my name is Kim Barton, and I'm the Public Relations Coordinator or Director for Nacogdoches Memorial Hospital. I'm also in charge of community health. And one of my duties as that, in that role, is the Director of the Healthy Nacogdoches Coalition. Healthy Nacogdoches is the group that was instrumental in asking the City of Nacogdoches back in 2008 to pass the original no smoking ordinance that is currently in effect in Nacogdoches. Healthy Nacogdoches voted recently to request an amendment to that ordinance to include electronic cigarettes under the definition of tobacco products. We request that e-cigarettes be prohibited in public areas, enclosed areas, and other areas where the City of Nacogdoches currently bans tobacco smoking. We're asking this for a few reasons. Public health being the first. E-cigarettes are considered a tobacco product because they contain nicotine and lots of other dangerous elements. The vapor clouds are not only unpleasant, as, just like smoke clouds are, for the strong flavors and the pungent odors, but the World Health Organization has found that there are elements in the aerosol that are carcinogenic and provide health risks to bystanders. Users can also develop severe lung damage, popcorn lung, that sort of thing. So it's dangerous for the users as well. But our main concern is the influence on our youth as well. Overall, adult smoking has declined, but e-cigarette use among young people has increased considerably according to the CDC. In 2015, more than a quarter of students aged in grades six through 12, and more than a third of young adults, had tried e-cigarettes. Research shows that young people who use e-cigarettes are a lot more likely to try cigarettes. It's kind of a gateway device. And so that's another one of our concerns. The other issue is that, just basic awareness, in 2008, when we asked for the smoking ordinance, e-cigarettes were just on the forefront. We didn't really know a lot about them, so we didn't include them in our ordinance. Now we know a lot more about the results of using e-cigarettes, that they're not just the benign smoking cessation device that we had hoped that they would be. And knowing that, we would ask that they be included in the ordinance, now that we know that they pose a possible health threat. We're hopeful that the role for e-cigarettes will continue to be just a smoking cessation device, but that doesn't seem to be, that doesn't seem to be the case, especially with our youth. So we would respectfully request that you add that to the ordinance. And in conclusion, I would say that that smoking ordinance has been very effective. In 2005, the rate of adult smokers in Nacogdoches County was somewhere around 32 percent. With the passing of that ordinance, just 10 years later, in 2016, the smoking ordinance had helped drop our rate to 16.9 percent. Thirty-two percent to 16.9 percent. So the smoking ordinance has really helped, and we would hope that it would help with the e-cigarette issue in our community as well.
Thank you. I'm going to now ask for public comment, and then we may have some questions for you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this issue? Any comments? For, against? Okay. Do, does any council member have a question for Ms. Barton? Or a comment? Mr. Bolden?
No.
No? Okay. Do we want to have any discussion, or is someone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion when we pass Agenda Item Number Five, Banning Electronic Cigarette Smoking in Non Smoking Areas Throughout the City of Nacogdoches.
I second a motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? No?
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, we'll have to draft an ordinance and bring it back, but what the council's instructing staff to do is to prepare that ordinance. The motion's fine as is.
Okay.
Okay, so no discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Barton. Number Six, Receive an Annual Report from the Boys and Girls Club of Nacogdoches. And there he is. Hi, Steve, how are you? Steve Davidson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appreciate, Mayor, and the council members appreciate the opportunity to come before you, talk to you a little bit about the Boys and Girls Club, and give you an update on our facilities. So this may be a little redundant, but for any of the new council members, just to slide on the brief history of the Boys and Girls Club, and the relationship with the city, the Boys and Girls Club, the city, and the Nacogdoches Independent School District entered into an agreement back in 1998 to build an aquatic center after a capital campaign and a legal gift by the Lehman family. The center was opened in 2000, should be actually 2002. Aquatic Center serves a number of roles here at the, in our community. It's used by our members predominantly during the summer months. It's used by both Nacogdoches Independent School Districts, middle school and high school. High school is just finishing up their season, and the middle school started using the pool back in March. We had one young man who finished seventh in the state, and then we also had one of our relay teams that went on to the state as well. Regarding general swim, the pool is open three times a day for two hours. The times fluctuate a little bit, predominantly from 5:30 to 7:30 in the morning, from 11:01 in the afternoon, and then also from 6:30 to 8:30 in the evenings. And that's open to anybody in the community, and then we're also open for two hours on Saturdays. And then we're also available for any community members who'd like to rent the pool for parties or functions like that. We also offer lifeguard training. We do general CPR classes that are certified through the Red Cross. We do swim lessons both for youth and adults. And then we do a collaboration with the local Boy Scouts, so the young men and young ladies are able to receive their merit badges as it relates to aquatics. And then we also do water aerobics at the lunchtime, the lunchtime period. Regarding some of our numbers, we are open 1,650 hours over the course of the school year in the summer. Total patrons, we had 4,376 that used the pool, 2,844 of them that were adults, and 1,532 which were youth. Other youth served, we have our swim team, our ambush swim team, we have about 180 participants there. Swim lessons, we had 297 this past year. And then through the birthday parties, we had 28 birth parties, 28 birthday parties over the course of the year, serving and another additional 417 residents. Give you a little information about the Boys and Girls Club in general. Our total membership this year was 1,513 unduplicated members. This includes the three campuses, the NiPco gymnastics facility, the pool, and the club. In the school year, we had 373 registered members, and during the summer, we had 451 registered members. And then we have our sports programs, football, swimming, and the gymnastics. Some demographic information for you. Oh, one other thing, two other things regarding the pool, I apologize. We did make some improvements to the pool this year. Just wanted to pass this along. And for council members, pass that up to them, Jeff. I brought you and Jan. We changed the lighting in the pool. We had old canned fluorescent bulbs, put in LED lights, so you can see the top pictures from the old lighting system and the bottom, so you can see how well it now illuminates the pool. It's made a huge difference and got a lot of positive feedback from the residents. A second thing regarding the pool, we're working with an insurance provider, Optum, which is part of United Healthcare, who, if you are a member of United Healthcare, will actually pay for the visits that people are able to use the pool, up to 10 visits per month, and will reimburse the Boys and Girls Club, so the local residents won't have to pay to use the pool facility. So those are a couple of nice pluses that we're working on. Our membership demographics, we're 57 percent boys, 43 percent girls. Most of our membership are under the age of 13, 80 percent, while over 13 is 20 percent. And our ethnicity is pretty diverse. We're 33 percent Caucasian, 31 percent African American, 19 percent Hispanic, and 16 percent who refer to themselves as multigrace. Family breakdown, these numbers are a little bit skewed. We have 52 percent of our kids live with both parents, 48 percent live with single parents. Majority of our folks that are involved either in the aquatics or the gymnastics are predominantly two-parent families. A lot of the kids who come to the club after school and come to the summer program, predominantly single-parent families. We've got a staggering number of meals that we provide to our members. As you can see, we provided 22,780 meals during the school year, and 36,450 meals during the summer, for a total of 59,230 meals in 2018. That's broken down, we're open 175 days during the school year, so it's roughly 208 meals. Dinner meals that we provide, and then during the summer, we provide breakfast and lunch. So that breaks down to 43 days, it's 529 meals, or roughly about 264 meals for both breakfast and lunch. So it's a pretty significant number. And though the majority of our kids are here in Nacogdoches, we do have some kids that come from Central Heights and Garrison and Douglas, predominantly during the summer months. I think it's important to know that we have 1,513 registered members, 6,244 registered members in Nacogdoches School District as of the first of the year. So if you look at the penetration, 24 percent of the kids registered in Nacogdoches are in some capacity involved in the Boys and Girls Club. So that's roughly one out of every four children in our community benefit from the Boys and Girls Club. And you always ask a little bit about our revenue streams, I just wanted to bring that down, so it's broken down there by donations, annual campaigns, fundraising efforts, grants and foundations, annual contracts, and then memberships, fees, and dues. A couple of changes since last year when we reported, we are up more in the grants and foundation components, and up a little bit more in the fundraising component, down a little bit on the donations and the annual campaign. But that's just how we determined our budget for this year. And right now, we're entering 2019 with a deficit of about 40,000 that we have to make up. Any questions?
Let's see, is there any public comment? Okay. None? Counsel?
That's an incredible service, I appreciate that. Can you speak to how the meals are funded? Is that a state program, or is that something that you guys take on?
So during the summer months, we're a designated site from the schools, so basically we supplement the program that the schools do during the school year, so we get funding that way. And then we have an independent contract with the meals that we provide for the school year.
Awesome, thank you.
Sure.
Do the adults that use facilities, is there a dues or membership fee for that?
They do. They pay per visit.
Per visit?
Per visit. So they can get a punch card, which a lot of them take advantage of. They can buy a punch card for $60, and that comes, includes 20 visits, and that punch card is transferable, so if other people in the family want to use it. Otherwise, it's $5 a visit.
Fantastic, okay, thank you.
And again, the, if the insurance program goes through, then they can do 10 visits during the course of a month, that the insurance company will pay for that.
Have you noticed much of an energy savings from the LED conversion?
We just, we just put them in last month, so.
Got it, okay.
We think our return on investment's going to be about 18 months.
Fantastic.
But after that, obviously, that's a savings going forward. And we did it not only in our aquatic center, but we also did it in our gymnasium.
Excellent.
Any questions? Is there anything the city can do for you, other than try to find, give you more money, which would be difficult because everybody wants that, but is there something new that you all are doing this year, or are you having a new kind of?
You know, one thing that we're working on, and it's, you know, obviously, we would like to come back to the city and talk to them a little bit more about it, is the property there that's on the corner of, let me make sure I understand, get this, it could be on the southeast corner? Looking at you, Jeff. Is it right southeast corner?
Yes, sir.
There, we have four and a half acres. There's been some signage up there about athletic fields that have been up there probably a significant amount of time. And we would like to get that completed this, this year, over the next year, the 18 months.
Okay.
We've got, we've met with the city in regards to the grading and the drainage issues, so we've met with the city planner, we'll have to probably pull a special permit, so we'll be taking those trees down there and putting up a multi-use field. It's predominantly looked at being a football field, but we'll have a 100-yard field and a 60-yard field.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have a goalpost that's also can be converted to a soccer field, and then we're looking to putting in three small baseball diamonds there too as well. So even though it's going to be the Boys and Girls Club property, and we'll be using it during football season, we'd like to be a partner with the community, the university, the baseball folks, so people can use that field all over the course of the year. So we may come back to the city and ask for a little support there.
Outstanding, okay. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation.
Okay, appreciate your time.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Seven, Consider Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 1778-09-18.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Case Offerman, Assistant City Engineer. We've got two companion items for your consideration this evening, in regards to the Direct Connect Flyover Project that Tech Dot and the city have been designing for the past two years. As you know, we've, we've been under design with this, and we're finalizing plans right now for a summerlet of this project, or a bid of this project by Tech Dot. In the interest of time and construction feasibility, Tech Dot has agreed to allow the city to construct our water and utility relocations under their construction contract. To do this, we have, we do an advanced funding agreement with Tech Dot to allow that to happen. We've got anticipated construction cost of about 2.75 million for this work, a maximum of 3.67 million for this work, with about $550,000 worth of reimbursable aspects of this project for water and sewer lines that we're already in easements off Tech Dot right away, and so they're eligible for reimbursement. That leaves us an upfront cost of about 2.2 million, which we will pay to the state in the next month or so. The, the current budget, however, is only 3.302 million. So in order to be able to complete this agreement, we'll have to have a budget amendment ordinance for about $448,000 to get us to about 3.75 million, which includes about $80,000 for anticipated construction administration inspection costs that we'll have on, on the construction portion of this work. So at this time, we are asking you to consider the budget amendment ordinance for this for about $448,000, and I'd be happy to answer any questions after a public comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this issue? Okay, hearing none? Counsel?
Now, Tech Dot is going to do the engineering and actually the physical work, are you going to do, is there an option as to where the city could do it, or Tech Dot could do it?
Well, to be clear, the planning phase, the actual engineering portion of the work is wrapping up right now. We've been under contract with 215 Consulting for the past couple of years on our utility design to that effect. Tech Dot's wrapping up their roadway and flyover designs also as we speak. So the summer, oh, actually June, is when the actual bidding of the projects going to take place. The construction of the work is going to be under Tech Dot's construction contract, and that's where the advanced funding agreement comes into play. The reason we're doing this, it was such a compressed time schedule, and with Tech Dot's funding, depending on us getting done in a certain amount of time, we just didn't have enough time to get everything designed, built, and in place before they come in, which would be the preference, but with the timetable, it just wasn't feasible at this. We were doing the same thing on Austin Street currently. Y'all looked at the advanced funding agreement this time last year for that, and it's the same kind of thing. It saves on traffic control, duplication, ease of constructability, they can go in there, we can all be there at the same time. So nobody's really having to wonder what everybody else did before them. Everybody sees it going in the ground at the same time, so. There's, there's pros and cons, and in this situation, we feel like this is the best way to do it, actually the only way to do it at this point, so.
Cost-effective?
Cost-effective in terms of certain aspects, such as traffic control, as I mentioned, that cost might have been doubled up if we had to do the utility relocation, and then Tech Dot come in and remobilize the traffic control for their work, so save on that, and other ancillary costs like that, so. And, you know, bundling everything up can also potentially save you, you know, econo, you know, econo, economy, excuse me, on some of the prices, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
What is the downside of doing it this way?
Some of the downside might be bid prices might be a little higher than just doing an outright utility project, mainly because the, the construction company that gets the bid for the project is going to sub out most likely the utility work, so you'll have a premium cost there, a little more overhead that's involved with that, so. But it'll, it won't be astronomical, I don't believe. It'll, it'll still be well within the reason.
And the traffic control will help offset that?
Potentially.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, Chair will entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Is there two of them?
Mm-hmm, there's two separate ones.
I make a motion to approve the amended ordinance number 1778.0918, appropriating various amounts in accordance with budget adopted for the ensuing fiscal year, October 1, 2018, and in September the 30th, 2019.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Agenda Item Number Eight.
Now, now that you approved the budget amendment, we're going to ask that you consider accepting the advanced funding agreement with Tech Dot for the US 59I-69 Direct Connector Project. And to reiterate, this is in order for the, the city to be able to install utility relocations under the Tech Dot construction contract, in the interest of time, feasibility, et cetera. So we would ask you to accept that agreement.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, hearing none? Counsel? Questions? Okay, and if not, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass Agenda Item Number Eight as it's written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, we accept Agenda Item Number Eight as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Case. Number Nine, Receive Annual Contact Report, 2018. Chief Seavey, good evening.
Madam Counsel, good evening. By March 1st of each year, by law, Texas state law, I have to prepare and deliver to you a report for racial profiling from the previous year. So you have that report electronically, as well as the PowerPoint, and so we're just going to go from there. There are many standards that have to be met as a result of state law. Standard number one was established in 2001 under Article 2132 of Code of Criminal Procedure. This is prohibits officers from using bias, or prejudice, or, or any other illegitimate means of decision-making, from enforcing laws, searching, stopping anyone based on the following races and ethnicities. Now here's where I have to give you my first comment. In the racial profiling laws, including the Sandra Bland Act and many others, sometimes you're referred to as Caucasian, sometimes as white, sometimes as black, sometimes as African, sometimes as African American, Hispanic, Latino, many other ways, so the, the words that you see here, Caucasian, African, Hispanic, and throughout this report, I am using them exactly as they appear in the law. So some people get confused about all this, what's the difference between this, that, and the other? Well, it's out, was written in the law by the legislature, so that's how it will appear in this report. These are the required categories that you see, Caucasian, African, Hispanic, Asian, Native American, are the required categories, and agency may include others if they find that necessary. Standard Two, if you stop a person in a car or on a foot for either violation of traffic law, criminal law, or an investigative stop, you have to collect the following information, and that's a physical discretion which includes, not limited to, race, gender, and ethnicity. We have to record the reason for the stop. Most of the time, it's traffic stop, sometimes it's investigative stop, there are probably a couple other reasons out there, but that's the bulk of them. We have to report if a search was conducted, if that search was by consent or based on probable cause, if contraband was discovered, and what type, and if a search by probab, well, I already said that, search by probable cause was conducted. An arrest, we have to report if an arrest was made, we have to report the location of the stop, and if a citation or warning was issued, and the warnings can be either verbal or written. Third standard includes information gathered in accordance with the law in what we refer to as the Tier One and Tier Two data. Tier Two is traffic stop data, or Tier One is traffic stop, Tier Two is pedestrian stop data. So we have to record that. Standard Four, if you have video and audio recordings, you must create a standard for reviewing those videos. So our supervisors review the videos of the folks that work for them. They look for violations of policy, violations of law, and good conduct, good behavior, things like that. If, if a video in our system is not retained for evidentiary purposes or some other reason, such as a com- or some other reason such as a complaint or, or to support a project or a program, then they are, um, um, retained for ninety days and after that, uh, they leave our system. That, it's an automated function of our video recording system that does that. Uh, if an officer has complained on, this is another one part of standard four, we have to provide the officer with a copy of the video. Now, I will also say that we provide the complainant with a copy of the video. Everybody gets to see the video, nobody is excluded from that. That's a step beyond the law. Standards five and six, five requires an agency that does not use recording equipment to examine the feasibility of installing the equipment. We don't have to worry about that because we record two different ways. We record from the vehicle and we record from the officer with body cameras. And then standard six, um, exists, exempts agencies recording, um, by audio and video from certain additional requirements. Most of these requirements have to do with paperwork. You're gonna have to track this. Either through video and audio equipment or you're gonna have to track it by paperwork by filling out, uh, a, a form for each and every, um, stop. So, uh, again, we're exempt from that, uh, on tier two stops. Seven standard, uh, requires that we have a citation form. The citation form can, can be, um, uh, electronic, uh, ours are electronic through, uh, Brazis, a company called Brazis. Uh, they must contain the information required by the racial reporting laws. Um, we use electronic citations. They're fully compliant and probably a little overly compliant. We include a little bit of information not required by racial profiling. It helps us track patterns and, uh, trends within our city. So in your copy, you got, uh, the Del Carmen Report, which you got electronically, um, which is extensive. And, uh, if any of you read the report in full, I congratulate you, um, because it is a, it's a huge report. But those parts of the report that are important, I think, uh, Senate Bill ten seventy-four, Code of Criminal Procedure, Transportation Code, and the House bills and others, and, and then finally from twenty seventeen, um, House Bill thirty fifty-one, which modifies the original racial profiling, um, process. And then, so, eighteen forty-nine, which we refer to as the Sandra Bland Act. That was enacted in twenty seventeen, so, um, we had a law change there. So you might recognize that there's a slight difference in the look of this report from all the prior reports that I've submitted, and that's because there was a law change and there's a, a necessary information change within the report. We also, um, are still proud of our, our involvement in the Texas Police Chief Association Recognition Program. The recognition program requires that you fully comply with the law, that in addition to that, that you make the reports available to, to the public within your community and to anyone that wants to see them. And there are several other standards within the recognition program. And if you don't comply with those, your recognition status is pulled. We fully comply with that. As a matter of fact, I don't know why anyone wouldn't. It's just the right thing to do, I think, is to, is to, to lay, lay everything out on the table and let people take a look at it. Uh, our, our demographic information is based on the twenty-ten census, which is widely regarded as the most consistent and practical way to track demographics. Uh, we're still relying on that twenty-ten census and, until the next census pops up, population thirty-two nine nine six. And then the, uh, categories, um, uh, that are tracked, as, as far as demographics go, you can see right there fifty-one point two percent white, twenty-eight point four percent black, and then Native American, Asian, Pacific Islander. We have a little bit of everything in, uh, in our city. Uh, motor vehicle contacts, including tickets, citations, and warnings. So, uh, eleven thousand seven hundred total contacts for twenty eighteen, quite a few contacts. Tickets, um, uh, or citations, uh, you can see the number at the bottom there and I cannot. Um, five thousand seven hundred and sixty-six, uh, verbal warnings, one thousand nine hundred and nine, written warnings, four thousand twenty-five. I mean, the process, this is kind of an evolving thing that I'm, I'm starting to require officers to give written warnings. Um, because I think that's a better documented, um, um, form of information where, where we're tracking, with, with the verbal warning, you're not really tracking everything I would like for you to track. Even though we still have to fill out that, that information, it's not as easy for us to track. Um, why would someone give a verbal warning as opposed to a written warning? Well, detectives, administration, folks like me, I stopped a car a couple of weeks ago and then I got a visit from a patrol sergeant who said, "Fill this out." And so verbal, verbal warming, warnings, uh, have to be given by units that do not have electronic ticket riders in them. And none of our detective, um, units or admin, um, vehicles have ticket riders. So we have to, we have to go back and catch up on that data. And, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna try to get to the point where the vast majority of our warnings are, are going to be written warnings. I, I think it's a better way of, of doing business. Motor vehicle searches, there were three hundred and fifty-four searches conducted, hundred and forty-six were consensual. The remainder are, uh, probable cause searches. So what's the difference between probable cause and a consent search? Um, a consent search, the officer suspects that there may be contraband of some sort in the vehicle and they just say, "You might have to look in your car." And a lot of people say, "Sure," and they let us. And, uh, it's usually a very cordial, um, encounter. And, uh, um, I, I am, I don't know why, but I am surprised at how many people say, "Yeah, go ahead and look." Then we open up the trunk and there sits ten pounds of marijuana or a, a big bag of whatever, but they, they do it and, and they'll have to. So I've been asked this question, what happens if I say no on a consent search? Well, then we finish the traffic stop and walk away, unless probable cause exists. And then that takes us into an, another field. Uh, but most of the time, we just turn around and walk away. So a lot of people say, "I can't believe that." Well, it's, well, it's true because the next car coming down the road is probably gonna be different. It's, there's, it's, it's not like we have a lack of things to do. So, um, uh, the, the, the more people you stop, those opportunities present, present themselves time and time again. And it's not worth, and I'm speaking from a thirty-eight-year perspective, it is not worth my job, my retirement, and my reputation to conduct an illegal search of any kind. And I think most, most of the officers down there, if they don't feel that way after they watch this tonight, they will. And, uh, um, but it's just not worth it. It's really not. Um, uh, because the, the, a violation, violating someone's civil rights carries serious sanctions with it. So I don't want to think about some of them, so let's just not go there. And, uh, and I think that's the way most people understand. Probable cause search means that you have, that there is a significant amount of information that would lead you to believe that a crime has been or is being committed. That has to be articulated, um, but at the scene of a vehicle, there's a vehicle exception that allows you to search the car without a search warrant based on probable cause. So a lot of people say, "Well, there's no accountability there." Well, yes, there is, because later on, you gotta take that case to court and a judge is going to hear that probable cause in court and can suppress your evidence and the case goes away. So there are series of, of stops in the criminal justice system that hold us to a very accountable level, um, but that's, that's probable cause. Vehicle contacts, this is based on the fair road standards, which, um, uh, it essentially means how many households have access to a vehicle? Which is kind of hard to understand, but, um, you may have multiple cars in a household or you may have a household that has no vehicle, but they have access to a vehicle by another means. And so this is, this is the, called the fair road standard, um, comparison. And as you can see from your numbers, uh, fifty-two percent, um, of our contacts have access, um, to cars. Uh, white, black is thirty, Hispanic sixteen, and then one percent or less throughout the remainder. And, uh, and then, um, households that have access, um, goes up, uh, a little bit higher. In each case, fifty-five percent thirty-three, uh, except for Hispanics, um, and eleven percent. I wish I could explain to you what that means, other than there are not, there are multiple, but, well, there just aren't many cars to go around, I guess. And, uh, um, but that's based on the fair road, um, standard test. This is an interesting number here. And this is what I encourage people to do if you, if you, um, if this number doesn't make sense to you. Out of ten thousand two hundred and thirty-nine stops, officers knew the ethnicity or race of an individual one thousand four hundred and sixty-one times, which equals fourteen percent of the time. So you're thinking, "That's eighty-six percent of the time and you're telling me that an officer could not tell who was driving that car?" Sure. So here's my offer. If, if that number doesn't sound right to you, come out and let's go take a ride. I'll put you in the front seat of a patrol car, because when they're running radar, they're popping cars, pardon the jargon, popping cars a block, two blocks, three blocks away. They're making the decision to stop the car before they can see in the vehicle. At night, it's almost impossible to see in most cars because of reflections and tinted windows. And even in the day, on a bright sunny day, depending on the angle of the sun, you can't see in them. So if this number doesn't sound right to you, um, and, and this is open to members of the community also, come take a ride and, uh, um, see how we do our work and see, um, the results of that work. So about fourteen percent of the time, and this is important, this is at the point that the decision was made to make a stop. It's not, did you figure out what this person looked like as you're walking up to the car? It's, I've decided to stop the car. Now, do you know the race or ethnicity at that point in time? Fourteen percent of the time, officers did. Um, before I get into how to file a complaint, I've, I have made some, and I think about these things a lot, because I, I teach CJ classes at SFA. I interact with the students a lot. Um, I interact with the clubs and the organizations on campus and I enjoy that. Um, and I have four kids. And, um, I know, how can I keep a body like this having had four kids? But, um, I have, I have four kids and they're different. Each generation is different from the one before. I can, I can guarantee you that if you come down and you look at my brand-new generation of my youngest officers, they don't think the way our parents and grandparents did. They don't think the way we think. They're actually much more open, much more inviting, um, they are more, um, they, they don't see things the same way we saw them. And if you ever, like I said, if you wanna come down and take a ride, um, with some of our younger officers, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised in the future of our country. I, I think they're, in many ways, in many ways, they're, they're better than we are, uh, I think. Um, so, not in every way, but I'm still good at some stuff. But, uh, but I think, I think their attitudes and opinions about society and culture are, are a lot more open and accepting than ours are. And I would challenge anybody who is a generation or two away from your twenties to, to, uh, think about that a little bit. And, um, um, I think it's, it might comfort you a little bit. So, twenty eighteen, there was one racial profiling complaint in twenty eighteen. This was a violation of a city ordinance. It was a loud music, um, call. And, uh, uh, the individual later complained that he felt like he was stopped because of his race. This entire incident is on video, including the noise. And, um, uh, once the complaint was taken and was investigated, we invited this individual back in to look at the video. Uh, multiple, he refused, uh, and also stopped answering his phone. So that's the result of that complaint. So you, s- some people are gonna say, "One racial profiling complaint in the entire city of Manhattan." We have, we, we get complaints throughout the year. But a racial profiling complaint has to, has to be a violation of the law that we just briefly talked about during this presentation. So, um, I think we had about twenty-five complaints total of all types last year. Just because a person complains, if it doesn't meet the, the definition of a racial profiling complaint, it still gets thoroughly and fully investigated. We still show people the video. We still ask them to come in and, uh, tell us what happened and, and help us try to understand how, how we can resolve the issue in, in a manner that's good for everybody. So, um, this particular complaint was the only one. It was the finding, I have four findings. Exonerated means that the incident occurred, it happened, but it was handled properly. So this particular incident, uh, the finding on that was exonerated. How do we receive complaints? Well, in person, at the police department or at a place of your choosing, over the phone, by email, or any other electronic means. Um, you can pick up a complaint form in the lobby before I came here this evening, went out to our lobby. And they are indeed still out there waiting, um, for someone to pick one up. You can speak to any employee at the police department. And there's a little note under there that says orientation. Every new employee that comes to work, and this has been this way since two thousand and five when I started, every single employee talks to me. We meet, we meet an average of an hour to two hours. And we talk about the importance of handling complaints from the public. We talk about the importance of making people feel like we are concerned about the issue, which we are. Um, and I explain to them what their responsibility, their personal responsibility is when we deal with a complaint of any kind. And, uh, um, so everybody gets that in orientation. And I hammer that one home because, uh, when, when a member of our community has a complaint on the police department, I think our greatest responsibility is to make sure that we're dealing with it. Because how will we get better if we don't look internally at our processes, our people, our procedures, and things like that? So it's taken very, very seriously. It's one of the few things, um, that I meet with every single employee about. Um, if you don't want to talk to an investigator, you can talk to me. I'll meet you at your home. I'll meet you at a restaurant. Um, uh, I'll meet you in a park, a public place, a private place, it doesn't matter. Um, you might, you can bring a witness, you can bring an advocate, you can bring a friend, you can bring a lawyer, you can bring anybody you want to. Uh, if you're not comfortable speaking to me or an investigator, I will find somebody. And in the end, if you're absolutely not trusting of the police department and our processes, then I will refer you and set up a meeting with Texas Rangers, who, um, uh, will investigate any allegations against the police department. Uh, and we use them, uh, when major investigations occur. Fortunately, we had nine in twenty eighteen. Don't think we had any in twenty seventeen, no major allegations. But regardless, that option is open to anyone, uh, in any set of circumstances where they feel like they can't or, or won't trust our processes. What can you expect from an investigation? You'll be interviewed. You'll be asked to sign a, a formal statement. Uh, the complaint will be assigned to an investigator. The chain of command for investigators on internal affairs complaints is the investigator straight to me. It doesn't go through a sergeant, a lieutenant, or an assistant chief. It's a one-to-one, um, roadway from the investigation straight to me. I, I personally supervise every investigation. All video, audio, radio, traffic, um, nine-one-one calls, everything will be, will be re- re- retained, if I want to think it up, retained, uh, for the length of the investigation, for the length of the complaint. Any witnesses will be interviewed. And then a finding will be made at the conclusion of the interview. And that's, uh, exonerated, unfounded, not sustained, or sustained. Exonerated means you're absolutely right. Everything you said happened, happened, and it should have. It was proper procedure, not a violation of law or policy. Uh, on an unfounded, that means it didn't happen. Usually, unfounded cases are the result of we watched the video and it didn't happen. It, it just didn't. And it happens occasionally. Um, and then not sustained, this is the one I hate the most. It's a he said, she said. We can't tell if it happened or if it didn't happen. So, and we'll tell people, "I'm sorry, I cannot sustain the complaint, nor can I exonerate it." Uh, we just can't tell, uh, from what happened because there's insufficient evidence or, or witnesses, uh, or recordings. Um, so I don't like that one because nobody gets happy there. And then there's sustained. That means that the, that it happened and it was wrong and, and our employee was wrong in what they did. And if that happens, and, and by the way, you're informed of this in writing at the conclusion of, of the investigation and you are invited to come in and review all evidence, all statements, and video, audio, whatever there may be. Um, so, um, if a complaint is sustained, then we begin a process of determining disciplinary action. Could be anything from, um, um, counseling by a supervisor to training, days off without pay, termination, uh, suspension of various kinds, uh, um, suspension of, of the ability to work off-duty security jobs, for instance, is, is one of the things. Um, there's all kinds of options in there, but on a sustained complaint, it will be handled. But on a sustained complaint, it will be handled with, uh, some sort of disciplinary action. Um, and then sometimes we discover that maybe one of our policies is insufficient. So we go through annual policy reviews, but a, a complaint, uh, that is sustained, and we believe that we have a policy that, that needs to be revised, updated, taken out, whatever, then, then we look at that avenue also, and try to make sure that our policies and procedures aren't hindering our ability to serve the community. Major investigations, again, are referred to a state agency for investigation. So in conclusion, the Dell Carmen, um, which we've had Dell Carmen reviewing our data for a couple of years now, because of the law changes and because we wanted to make sure that we had an external objective, uh, uh, viewer of our data, um, tell us if we're doing right, doing wrong, or whatever, uh, Dell Carmen made the, the statement that the Nacogdochee Police Department is compliant with state law and has shown a history of compliance. Because when we had them very first look at our, our numbers, they looked back historically also and found out that, that we are applying the law consistently. Uh, my hiring philosophy, my retention philosophy, we don't need bad officers, or we don't need officers so bad that we need bad officers. We have a very, very strict, very, very high-level, um, background investigation and standards, um, that we require, um, for our employees. It's in the best interest of our community. It's in the best interest of the police department. Because if I have good employees working for me, I'm not going to have to deal with so many complaints because they're going to do their jobs well, uh, from the, from the beginning. One bad employee is too many, in, in my opinion. So what if you want to know more? If anybody would like to discuss this report, um, alls you got to do is call. I'm happy to visit with you. There's my direct office line. Um, we have Citizens Police Academy. We hold those every other year. There's a phone number to get involved with the Police Academy. Sergeant Brett Ayers, um, will take your information down and can make that happen. You can come down and visit us, three twelve West Main Street. We're always there, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. Um, and you're welcome. Anybody's welcome. There's, there are no secrets behind those locked doors. Um, the doors are locked primarily because we have a lot of confidential information back there, and we have to control that. Uh, but you're still welcome to come and wander around. I, I take people on personal tours frequently. Got one coming up this Friday at ten-thirty. You're welcome to come down. Um, you can also take a ride. Um, you sign a waiver, and you have to meet some minimal requirements. Now, somebody who just got out of Huntsville, who's learning to improve their trade, we're probably not going to let you ride. Um, because we don't want to, we don't want to, uh, assist you in your training for your, your bad deeds. But most people come down and they, it's, it's, uh, it's a surprise. You mean, I can go and ride with a police officer on duty, on shit? Yes, you can. Uh, fill out that waiver, and, uh, we'll put you out in patrol car. Friday nights are usually best. Saturday nights, number two. Try for warm weather. And, uh, um, that's not me. I like to walk on sidewalks, but I have no information on them. So with that, if you have questions, I'll, I'll try to answer them the best that I can. Um, and, um, I, I appreciate y'all listening to what is potentially a tedious report at best.
Of course. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone here tonight that has a comment, uh, they would like to make about the report? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, questions or comments for Chief Seavy?
I have a couple of course. Well, no, just one now because, uh, the amount of, uh, contacts between twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen.
Right.
Uh, almost double from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. And that's because of the workforce.
There's a couple of, of factors there. Um, one of the major ones is that in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we were running way, way, way shorthanded. We had only one person in our traffic division. We had two people in street crimes. Normally, we would have five in traffic and a four in street crime. And for twenty eighteen, uh, just a few months into the year, we magically became fully staffed in those units. That generated a lot more work. Um, and then some tweaks to the law required that we start tracking some additional stops, um, folks in stops. Um, so if you've got multiple people in a car, those become multiple contacts. Instead of one traffic stop, they become one traffic stop with multiple contacts. And, and that accounts for that additional, um, those additional numbers.
Uh, and the other data question, uh, motor vehicle searches and arrests.
Mm-hmm.
There was three hundred and fifty-four searches and fourteen custody arrests. Is there any way to separate whether it was consensual or probable cause?
Yes. We had three hundred and fifty-four searches. One hundred and forty-six of those were consent searches. And, and, and I should have put this in the chart, but this was one of those changes from seventeen to eighteen. Um, if you take three fifty-four, subtract one hundred and forty-six from them, the rest of them are probable cause searches.
Okay.
We only track two kinds of searches, consent and probable cause.
Yeah, could you tell though which the custody or the arrests? Could you tell which one came from, how many came from consensual, or how many came from probable cause?
We can. I'd have to go back and, and look at those numbers again. The, uh, uh, consent, search, custody, arrest. Um, I can't tell you from this chart.
Okay.
But, but I can from, because we track that also.
All right, I'll, I'll come back one day. Uh, one of the other things that, a question about, uh, training for officers for racial profiling. There's a training session besides the academy. It, once they get out of the academy, there's another training session for that?
There is a, a mandatory training that's required from TCO, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. Uh, officers go through that training. In addition to that, we go through other, uh, mandatory training, um, that is related to police and, and public contacts in general. Uh, we go through de-escalation training, for instance. Um, we go through customer service training. Uh, and, and probably, probably before an officer, uh, is on the street for more than three or four years, they probably conservatively go through a couple of hundred hours of training that's related to this broad field. Um, because that's really all racial profiling is. Yeah, it is making sure that we're, we're doing our job, doing it right, doing it fairly. But racial profiling doesn't cover everything we need to cover. We, we need to talk about, about how we, um, interact with the community. And that's, there have been two new, um, training, um, sessions added in the past four years that deal with how police departments relate, um, to the public.
Uh, is there a refresh, a timeframe like every other year that maybe refresh?
Our training cycle's on two years.
Two years.
So every two years, um, some things you're going to get, um, it's going to be part of the mandated training. Uh, and then there's usually, um, a segment, generally it's about fifty-fifty, new topics as well as, as revisiting topics from prior years.
Okay, my last question, uh, videos or, and or audio? Did you say that the, uh, videos are reviewed by an officer? Not that, you know, was on patrol, but a senior officer?
Yes, they're reviewed by supervisors.
All, all of the ones, whether it's, uh?
Not every video is reviewed, but a sample is reviewed.
Sample, okay.
Yeah, if they reviewed everything, that's all they'd sit there and do for twelve hours a day.
So, and that's sort of a, like a, you know, maybe incorporate some of the action and training in the future?
Well, and we get feedback from our supervisors to my training sergeant, who then creates in-house training, in-service training of our own. And, uh, um, and, and we, so we use that review. Um, and when you do come by the office, I, I'd love to show you how it's done because I can sit at my desk in my office and I can pull up the, uh, server and I can watch every single officer, um, doing their job on camera in my office anytime I want to. And, and do. And sometimes when I, I have a little downtime, I pull them up. And so I'm watching them, the assistant chiefs are watching them, the lieutenants are watching them, and the sergeants are watching them. And, and I think, um, we, we have a stated goal of how many hours of video supervisors have to watch each month. And they report on that, uh, through our, through our, our monthly goals. And, uh, uh, it ends up in an annual report, uh, eventually. So we know if we're hitting our goals or not on a month-to-month basis.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Do you have anything? I have a couple. Um, in your, uh, fair road standards test, the numbers you had, and you said it was families with the car, are those for drivers sixteen and up, or is it any, is it all ages?
It's actually households.
So it's the full household, not just drivers?
Yes. It's, and it's who has access to a car.
Well, a twelve-year-old.
Ye- yes. We're not going to go in that direction.
Okay. Okay.
It is, it, some, some, some. But they may have family members who have, who they give access to their vehicle. So, um, the, the, the thought is, is, is you may have X number of cars, uh, but you have a substantially larger population. So you're saying, well, how are you stopping all these people? And so they started tracking how many households have access to a vehicle.
Okay.
And that's why you usually get a little higher number, um, um, in that regard because, oh, well, in my neighborhood, we have three family members, two live next door, and one lives across the street. And they trade vehicles out all the time. And so one of the families I know does not possess a car. But they, they have access to their other family member's vehicle, so they're counted as having access to a car.
Okay. Okay. Another question is how, um, or have the body cameras made any difference in the, in tracking this?
I'm going to bring some one time. I think I'll just put it on the agenda one time, and I'll bring you some body camera video. It's phenomenal.
Yeah.
Absolutely phenomenal. Um, the detail, the audio, the video. Um, once upon a time, we saw what was through the windshield of that patrol car. And now that camera is right here, and it records every detail. Uh, and it, it, it is a different world. This is a different world that I lived in for thirty-seven years of my life. And, uh, um, body cameras are a real game changer. Uh, and, and in the beginning, I'll be honest with you, back in the good old days, we did not want cameras. Who wants to live their life on camera all the time? We saw what benefit it was, and now I have, I have officers who will come by and say, my camera's not working, and I don't want to hit the street without it. It is that great of a benefit. And, uh, and it's really, it's really been a very, very positive thing. It started slow. But for twenty years now, I know people who would not go to work without a camera.
Can I ask a question right quick about?
Yes, yes.
Uh, body cameras. When did they actually turn them on? Is it automatic when the siren comes on or whatever?
It's, it's actually, um, part of the in-car system, I would say. So when they get out of their cars, the cameras come on.
Automatic?
Automatic, then, when they activate their lights, the first click, it activates the car cam and the body cam.
Yeah.
Or if they push the button on the body cam, it activates the car or either button.
He's my tech man.
Okay, all right.
Or if they're in the impact position, both cameras activate.
And, and what we've done to, to supplement this, for the first time, all of our CID folks, our detectives, are issued body cameras now. And, and they never have been ever before, not in their cars, uh, or on their bodies. We're, we're interested in capturing as much, um, information as we possibly can.
Um, you mentioned this report is available to the public. How would the public go about accessing it?
Well, you can go to TCO, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, and they have a library of every agency required to report, um, in the state. And you just go to, and it's prominent on their website, racial profile reports. You click on that, and then you click on, they'll give you an agency list. You just click on Nacogdochee. And, uh, then within Nacogdochee, you've got the university, constable's office, sheriff's office, police department. Any, any agency with TCO is going to have that mandatory report on their website. We're also going to put it on, uh, um, on our website also, available locally. And, uh, um, or you can come by and I'll give you a copy of it. I'll let you have this copy. I have read this thing so many times. I'd love for somebody to take it.
I'm sure, okay.
Is, is it common for agencies not to be in compliance? Is that rare or?
It's rare, and, um, sometimes most of their non-compliance deals with getting the report in late after March first. And, um, um, and then some agencies, I think, have a problem that don't have an outside source checking their numbers. Sometimes they have a problem validating those numbers.
Um, that's a lot of good information. Thank you very much. And I would encourage everyone here and anyone else that's watching or reads about it tomorrow to take the chief up on his offer to do a ride-along. It is a fascinating and very knowledgeable experience, uh, to know, to see our, um, city from that side. And also take him up on his offer to, to meet with him because he's very sincere about that. And, um, I think we're very fortunate to have someone that wants to be that open with us. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay, agenda item number ten, update on sidewalk projects. Yay. Mr. Bartlett.
You're not really that excited, are you?
I am. We have been waiting, we, oh, sidewalks, sidewalks.
Bearing counsel, Steve Bartlett, uh, city engineer. So, um, wanted to come tonight to give you an update, and this was at your request. Uh, latter part of last year, you asked us to come back when we had some schematic drawings. Just to refresh your memory, uh, these are sidewalk projects which were part of funding we were able to get from an old revolving loan program, which is an economic development loan program. Uh, that program's being discontinued, so, uh, through negotiations with the state, we were able to capture about one-point-one million dollars instead of having to return that money to the state. As long as we used them for projects that the Texas Department of Agriculture, who oversees this program, felt were viable. So we came to you, and together we crafted, I think, through a couple of meetings, some alternatives, but some sidewalks and some park improvement projects. Uh, sidewalks were generally speaking about an eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar component of that. The parks were the remainder. So you will hear in the very near future about the parks as well. I think Mr. Bray will be bringing that to you in the near future. So tonight, and we hopefully sent all this to you, so you, you, you had some copies of these drawings. But generally speaking, uh, we've hired an engineer, uh, and they have been, uh, done a full field survey, detailed topographic survey, and been laying out the sidewalk locations. And what we provided to you was the general alignment of those. They're continuing to work on elevations and ramps and all some of the detailing of it. But, uh, you tasked us with two things, and I think part of that was a response to, uh, some public comments that night, uh, as well as your personal thoughts, and those were basically, Steve, we'd like to have six-foot sidewalks if we can, or wider. And we'd like those sidewalks, uh, to be offset from the curb, to have a, a green space. And that was for maybe both aesthetics and safety. So those were the two things we tasked our engineer with, is trying to fit those in. Uh, again, to remind you, we had three target streets. One was Park Street. That's from University Drive to About Tower Road. Uh, we had Martin Luther King Boulevard. That's from University Drive, uh, to Shawnee, that piece in front of the Splash Park, water park there. And then, uh, also, uh, West College from, uh, Pearl Street to, uh, North Street. So, uh, we've been proceeding with those. Uh, generally speaking, we've been able to, and what we've shown you in there is sidewalks that are all six-foot wide, as you requested. There are a couple of very minor, minor exceptions where we had a power pole or fire hydrant. We think we may have to narrow it, uh, a foot or so, just for a couple of feet in length. But basically, nominally, they're all six-foot wide for ninety-nine percent of the sidewalk. Uh, all those sidewalks were generally able to have a five-foot or greater grass buffer, no words between the curb and the sidewalk. There are some exceptions where we go down to about four. But there's one location of about five hundred feet on the Park Street project, uh, that is just, uh, west of Park Side Drive, where for about five hundred feet, we had to bring that six-foot walk, it's still six feet wide, but back to the curb. And the reason for that was, and if you drive it, you'll remember, there's a very dramatic hill there with pines planted on it. So in order to move that sidewalk off, we'd have to install some significant retaining walls, most likely cut some of those trees down. So it was a very large impact. So we're proposing for that five-hundred-foot stretch to bring the sidewalk back to the curb, the curb line. Uh, but other than that, the sidewalks will remain somewhere between generally five and nine foot away. So I think we're going to have a nice, nice greenbelt. So. Uh, all in all, it looks like they fit well. We've got a little bit of detailing left to do. The connection at North Street, uh, for Star Avenue is kind of an arduous one. The old, remember the old Hyder House brick fence area? So we're trying to work out exactly how to navigate through all that, uh, but I think we've got several ideas. Uh, so we will proceed. We anticipate this going out to bid, uh, very shortly, within the next couple of months. And so we'll be updating you on that. And so after a public comment, be happy to answer any questions on this. And again, this is not an action item. It's just simply an update for you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Okay. Counsel, any questions? Well, thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
Very much. That's very exciting.
And we'll keep you posted as we go out to bid and let you know how that's coming. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Um, are we having executive session this evening?
No, ma'am.
No. Then that concludes our meeting for February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Thank you all for attending. Thank you, staff, and thank you, fellow council members.